Okay, everyone, welcome to today's work session. We have an unusually short work session today because we have a unusually long executive session after it. So I invite our police chief and our code enforcement coordinator to come up and talk about fireworks.
Evening, council. My name is Tim Sellers. I'm code enforcement coordinator for the city of Milwaukee. I was in November, the fire department came and spoke to council regarding fireworks, and there was direction at that particular work session to have staff bring forth an ordinance that would ban the use, possession, and sale of all fireworks in the city limits of Milwaukee. And I've consumer fireworks, kind of really what we're talking about. They are what you would see sold at a fireworks stand in town. Display fireworks are more of the projectiles, the ones that sometimes people refer to as illegal fireworks already. Those are already banned inside the city and in the state. It's a thousand dollar fine right now if they're found in possession or they use those display fireworks. The, on our current code, doesn't allow any sort of fireworks in parks, and that's a $500 fine if they're found using any type of fireworks. The proposed ordinance would prohibit the sale, possession, and use of all fireworks, except exempt fireworks, as defined by O R S four eight zero point one one one. This would prohibit the sale, possession, and use of firecrackers, bottle rockets, roman candles, which already are, and then sparklers, fountains, cones, wheels, and any consumer fireworks. And this proposed ordinance is similar to what the city of Portland's code looks like. And the proposed ordinance does prohibit professional shows and does not provide a permitting process, which is, I think, is an important conversation for tonight. If that's the way council would like to go as well. The enforcement thus far with the council, with our code that we have, has equated to 14 citations. And there was one citation during, we did an overall ban in 2021 during the, there was an extreme dry timeframe that we did the emergency ban, and the council adopted a resolution in July one on that. And we did end up issuing one citation to some people that were previously warned about using just the regular fireworks. They had been previously warned that evening, and then they were caught using them again. And so then they were issued a citation on that. And there was one other citation issued for the the display type fireworks, which was already a code, and it's already a state, state ban on that. The, excuse me, other jurisdictions, I know the fire department talked about other jurisdictions when they were here. The, I put together a table in the staff report, W S four kind of does a comparison. And I tried to make it clear, I hope it was, but Portland, Eugene, and Bend all have a current ban on all fireworks, and the enforcement strategies have been complaint driven. Eugene, they just adopted it in October, so they haven't really had a season of what they're doing. They don't have a lot of plans for extra law enforcement that night. They're actually having some budget concerns. When I had a conversation with, I think it was a captain there, and they weren't sure about extra enforcement going to be available for that, for enforcing this code. Cannon Beach was pretty serious about it when they adopted it a couple of years ago, and they, they, they had, the first, the first year, they had everybody on, on staff was working that night. And then since then, they've reduced that down to just some extra help. Grants Pass has a specific timeframe where fireworks are allowed for the six P M. to eleven P M. on July fourth. That's it for, and some parts of town, it's just completely not allowed, some neighborhoods.
Did you happen to talk to them? I'm just curious as to whether that works, that idea of saying, okay, you can have them only in these hours. Because my, I mean, I would, if that works, you know, that might be somewhere we would want to go. My experience in Milwaukee is that it, in the last 20 years, has gone from being one or two days to being about 10 day thing of having fireworks. So, so I'm curious as to whether Grants Pass has any, found that to be a successful strategy.
So the areas that are, were specifically not allowed are more wooded areas, from what I recall. I did talk to somebody. It's kind of melded a little bit. The, they're the ones that have the fire department kind of take a little bit more approach. I was not talking to anybody with the fire department, and it is complaint driven. I don't know as far as success, what, what that means. I honestly, I don't, it's, if not a firework goes off and that's success, then that's, that's my, I don't, I don't know that that's happening. Grants Pass is obviously much further south than, than we are here, but, and I don't, I don't have any knowledge on what's, what's going on there as much. Happy Valley and Lake Oswego have a little bit more tied to the fire, fire risk. And Gladstone just has a, a parks that they've locally adopted. They, and, and they've locally adopted the, the overall fireworks ban, not, not the consumer level, but the state, the state version, which allows their code enforcement to do stuff, and they haven't been really, it's a P D, the, the police department adds one officer on Fourth of July. So the proposed ordinance, we don't anticipate too many budget impacts. We also don't anticipate a ton of workload impacts. We're not planning on giving more resources to this ordinance, and so therefore wouldn't cause a lot of budgetary impacts. The climate impact statement was there, tree loss and wildfire smoke increase community emissions and worsen air quality in the region. If, if that were to occur, we don't have a history of, a tremendous history of fire caused by fireworks. A friend of mine's house did catch on fire in the nineties on Logos Road by a firework. That's my only anecdotal story that I have, but that was however many years ago, so. Any alternatives to this ordinance? Like I said, there's, right now, it's currently prohibits and does not have a permitting mechanism for, for public displays, and so that could be an opportunity there. And of course, not moving forward with this ordinance is also an opportunity, option as well.
So I had a couple of questions, and one was that display question. The way you presented it, you were talking about Portland, but I mean, Portland, obviously, about this ordinance being like Portland's. Portland, obviously, has, oh, is it? Well, okay, mine is also turned off. Portland, obviously, has public displays, so they, I mean, waterfront blues fest, et cetera. So they must have some process for that.
It's my understanding, not completely up to date with their code. I think they have a separate code section that talks about public events and displays that they hang their hat on. The, I, it is my impression, I found the code change, and it, it didn't change the permitting part. Their code is not exactly easy to manage when going through and you're talking to a guy who reads code. So, anyway, I'm.
Okay, well, I.
I can dig into that for sure more.
Well, I mean, so Bend, for example, has a really simple one that says firework displays that have been issued a state fire marshal, general fireworks display permit are exempt from the prohibitions. So does the state fire marshal issue permits on this?
It's my understanding that the state fire marshal permits everything when it comes to fireworks.
Okay.
Regarding the, even the, the sale, the booth sales, I believe that they have to get a state marshal permit.
Okay, so like when, when the late Etzel Walt was still around and organizing the fireworks on, at Milwaukee Days, you think they went for a state permit for that?
I, I would, I would venture a guess that that's accurate.
Okay.
I think that's probably the case, but we haven't looked at that to make sure, to understand exactly how the permitting between jurisdictions meshes. The state fire marshal definitely issues the permit for the display, but I'm not sure what goes into that permit. So for instance, if, you know, a private landowner were to want to get a permit for that, I haven't looked at the permit application to see what they have to show the fire marshal to get it. Can you permit something in your backyard, further complicating things on a riverfront city? Are, you know, what's the jurisdiction tie in when you do the, the display on a barge out in the middle of the river? Right? I think that's how Portland does theirs. So I'm not sure whether or not we as a city would need to permit that in addition to the state fire marshal permit, or, or if the state, the state fire marshal permit might provide a sign off, similar to like a land use compatibility statement in another context, obviously, but a, a statement asking the jurisdiction, hey, is this cool with, with your code and what you allow?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be, I was looking for a way that it was not, you know, to allow it if somebody comes forward with the funding to do it, but also to not create a new process that staff has to do. And so that was what I thought was elegant about the state fire marshal. But it would be useful to know a little bit more about what they consider.
Yeah, I mean, that was my, this is the exact conversation Tim and I had, because I, I called him and said, hey, this seems to ban everything. What if Rotary or, you know, the Downtown Business Alliance or whatever, they want to put their money together and, and do an actual public display, what would they need to do? So that begs the question. So your comments, we, we thought about it and wanted to know what your feedback would be in terms of if that were to come to fruition at some point in the future.
Okay, and then one other question I had was about the amount of fine, which is just looking at what the different cities had. Does a thousand dollars seem right? Do we think we should have? It does seem weird to me that the fine is bigger than it is in the parks. But maybe should we be thinking about adjusting the fine levels? I mean, I, I can imagine that you, as a code enforcement or a police officer, are reluctant to write a thousand dollar fine. And would we have more enforcement if the fine were more, more, more modest, I guess?
I, I write tickets. So they're maximum possible fines.
Oh, okay.
When I write a citation, I, I know that the judge has the opportunity to lower the fine, that having a conscience, yes, that, you know, who knows, right? But, but a maximum possible fine of a thousand dollars, the judge can lower that. There has been a time where the judge has offered the opportunity for the defendant to take a class on firework safety, or, or I don't know the specifics of the class. And I think they've taken her up on it, and that has reduced the fine down to a, a more, well, lower. So I think, I, I, our, our, most of our fines are 500 bucks in, in our code as a maximum possible fine. So it's, but we have a few that are a thousand dollars also, so it's not, a thousand dollars isn't normal.
An outlier.
And I don't want to, and tree code fines are large, too.
Yeah.
So I think Cannon Beach was pretty aggressive with their $5,000 fine. Those were the, those were for the fireworks that are banned throughout the state, and they were pretty serious. And then they, and then if it's a, if it's a high fire danger, it's 5,000 for your sparkler. Again, maximum possible fines, and I don't know the officers, I don't know if they're writing those tickets or not, but that's, that's the, what the research shows.
I might offer, the fireworks at the level where we have the larger ones, they're expensive, right? So if the fine gets kind of low, it becomes kind of a, eh, I'm going to pay the fine and shoot off my fireworks. It's, if it's a higher fine where.
Well, that's true.
Right, it's going to have a more of a deterrent effect, because.
No, no.
I, I think we're obviously going to see people that, that if we do go forward with a ban of fireworks, they're going to push the system because they want to do the fireworks anyway. So how much of a deterrent do you want to, you want to put in front of them?
Other questions?
Yeah, actually, that's kind of more of my question is, and I know we don't have the data on that, but just the effectiveness of, of these different types of bans. Like, you know, from an enforcement standpoint, would it be more, like, if you did a total ban, would you get more complaints because more, there's going to be people who are still going to, either way, people are going to do it, right? So do we give a window and then have those complaints start from after that, like Grants Pass, similar? Would it be just let people have their time to do those fireworks and anything after that, then we can start doing complaints on, or would there be a higher amount of complaints if we just did a flat out ban? Would there be more people compelled to do it regardless, or would there be less complaints if you gave a window to have them do that? So I just from, and I, I know that we don't have the statistics or the data on that, but I'd be curious to know that, that information.
Yeah, that is, that's a difficult question. It's a good question, but it's difficult to answer. I think part of what we hope is that there's some way we, over time, generate voluntary compliance with this when it's a position statement of the city. And because we know it's almost impossible for us, the police department specifically, to enforce our way out of this sort of a problem, because the sheer number of violations there typically would be. So it's hard to say what gets us the most voluntary compliance. Messaging would be a part of that, and I don't know if a window where people could use them, I can see arguments for that. I, it's really hard to say. I would just add one other note along the lines of enforcement. That can sound like it's a position statement on our part when Tim talked about the level of enforcement. It's more of a statement of resources when compared to the sheer volume of these types of violations. We don't want people to think that we can solve this with enforcement. We will do what we can with the resources we have, but typically, these are high volume call days where our folks are super busy. And lately, the last couple of years, we're typically staffing shifts on overtime, if not daily, multiple times a week. So we're, we're mandating people to work overtime for the things where we absolutely have to force them to. So we have to be pretty intentional about what we're forcing them to work overtime on, because typically, the people working overtime are working a 14 hour shift. They're getting extended over from a 10 hour shift. So that does, our minimum staffing is three officers in uniform. We never go below that number. We try to be above that, so it can range from three to six, depending on the time of the day and the day of the week. But often, there are people almost daily that are working overtime. So we just have to be realistic about what our, our ability is to enforce our way out of this. And if this is more, in some ways, it's a request of the community of, hey, we want to change how we manage these issues, and we need your help, because we, we can't solve this by ourselves. how we manage these issues and we need your help because we we can't solve this by ourselves.
Thank you.
Yeah, I made a really short pros and cons list. And the pros of a fireworks ban, safety, right? Especially folks who suffer PTSD and for pets and kids. Reduced risk of fire, right, obviously. Cons, reduced revenue because quite a few folks use fireworks for their fundraising. And so with a ban on fireworks, they'd lose that revenue stream. And how do they make that up? And then enforcement, like, oh, like, you just said it, right? Enforcement's difficult, so it's it's hard. It's a really difficult choice.
I mean, I would add to the pros that having a ban is more clarity for citizens than what we have now. Because when your neighbor's firing something, you don't, you may not feel sure. Is that an allowable one or is that a not allowable one? Is that one bought, you know? I think there's a lot of lack of clarity and there's just a lot more clarity for everybody with a ban. I looked at Washington because I I had a conversation with someone who was like, well, you know, people will go to Washington and I'm like, yes, people will still go to Washington and get them. And I thought surely the Washington legislature is looking at banning them. And I could not find anything that indicates they're doing that. But many counties in Washington have actually banned them, like King County, Pierce County, most parts of Pierce County, and even the city of Vancouver has banned them. So it's kind of crazy that they're still selling them there. Other questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the the process. If you are in a situation of issuing a ticket and it and how that order of operations goes. If the ordinance were in place, there's in the ordinance, there's a reference to the possession, but it doesn't say anything about the quantity. And so I'm kind of wondering, like, if you interact with someone who's firing off fireworks within the city under this ordinance, would you then confiscate the entirety of what they have and issue a fine? And how how does that work in in operation?
Excuse me. We we have collected fireworks in the past on the prohibited ones. We did not confiscate the during the the all out band. I said, you know, July 9th, you're good to go, or whatever it was. So we did not confiscate the the consumer fireworks. There we I I did ask for them this year. The when they're holding some Roman candles, which are held in your hand and then, at least that's what she was doing. And I said, could you please give me the rest of those? And she said, yes, and gave them to me. I did issue her the citation, that's what I was there for. And it was a decent exchange. If she told me no, I don't I don't know what I would have done. I may have called for a cover car. I don't know, it's a, I don't know. It's I'm two years into doing this kind of enforcement and, yeah.
Okay.
We we would not like, say, for example, if we go into a cul-de-sac on a complaint that involves fireworks and we find some people on some fireworks, that doesn't give us the authority, for example, to go into like a garage and look for more fireworks. People have privacy expectations and that would not give us the right to go deeper into any of their personal areas, their their yards or garages looking for fireworks.
And if it if this is if it's a persistent issue with one particular party, is what's the maximum number of fines? Is it just one and done or do you fine if you have to come back? What does that look like?
Well.
A night?
If they're if they're if they're doing the illegal display type fireworks, it's a criminal, there could be a criminal site. So that's an up, that's an upper level of enforcement. If they didn't like, if it didn't get the message with the Munich Court site, they could get charged under the ORS statutes.
Okay.
I I cannot write that ticket.
Right, okay.
But just to confirm, if somebody at 6:00 PM gets a ticket from you, they continue to go down the path, would you return and write a secondary ticket that same night? Or is it a one night and you're done, I think is part of that question?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I and I think Justin and I had this conversation and and I don't remember where we ended up. We we kind of did the each day is a violation. But we probably, I don't know.
It's helpful.
What would we do? And we we could do it per per use. We talked about this, but we weren't.
Yeah, if Tim visits a a location where they're in violation and issues a warning. And then two hours later, there's another call, he comes out, issues him a ticket for a thousand dollars. Thinks he confiscates what they've got left, but two hours later, he gets called again. So that, you know, the range of options there are, you could each violation, you could tag them with a maximum fine. We as it's drafted now, it's a daily violation. So under the idea that, at least in most instances that they've experienced this, the people have complied after after they've received a citation, noting that the first time, first contact is usually a warning and the second contact is usually a violation. And we end up not going much deeper than that. But, you know, your your mileage can vary.
Thank you, that's helpful. I have a question about the economic impacts, following up on what Council President Nikotinos was mentioning. This if if this is passed, the ordinance would become effective within 30 days of the date of adoption. So have there been any discussions with either organizations who are fundraising and or retailers about existing stock on hand or existing orders that they may have in the queue? Has there have you interacted with anyone about that?
Today, I so I we got we got some correspondents sent and I talked to a TNT representative.
Okay.
TNT fireworks representative and also a local pastor who operates a stand that is that operates in the county. But I talked to I talked to him too. So and talked about where the city limits were. And they talked, he talked about that he made about eight to 11,000 in sales for their as a fundraiser for their for their organization doing that type of deal. And and he did say to me on the phone, I I don't know of any further, any other fundraiser that he can do that would, so that's what he told me.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I do think the timing of why we have this now is to be ahead of their.
Right.
Investment or their, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I'm also curious about the potential for folks to shift into very nearby unincorporated Clackamas County. In the Llewelling neighborhood, there's a patchwork quilt of different tax lots. So, you know, I think that can also be really confusing for folks that might see their neighbor firing off fireworks and their neighbor is actually in Clackamas County while they're in the city of Milwaukee. So I mean, that combined with the economic impact, I think those are some of the the things that are sitting with me right now. Yeah, thank you very much for your for your answers.
Yeah, the and just as clarity goes for that, the the right of way in in that neighborhood is is in the city. And so if they're if they're letting them off in the street, which is a safer place, I don't know. Then that would be inside the city regardless of if they live.
Okay.
In the county, but in the public right of way would it would be in the city. So if they're on their back patio doing it in the county, then yes, I we wouldn't have anything. And it would be very, it could be very confusing for neighbors, I could see that. I deal with those calls often.
Sure you do, yeah.
My neighbor here, it's like, well, they can do that there in the county or I can't help you, you have to call the county. But that happens a lot there.
Mayor, if I may, yeah, and and I'm not sure who to address this this question to, maybe it's you, actually. I realize there's there's some risk here. I don't feel like I have an understanding of the risk and and I I think before we decide this, I'm certainly going to go back and look at the fire department testimony, is that going to define the risk? Did they talk about the risk?
The risk of fire?
Yeah.
Oh.
I know there's risk. I'm just trying to to figure out the degree of risk.
Well, a lot of the conversation with them was about, do we tie the a ban to when we're at a high fire risk? Which is what, you know, a couple of the cities had done, they said here, like Oswego. Do we tie it to a high fire risk? And that was a lot of the conversation with them. The the conversation went toward an all out ban because of that call is never made until July 1st or late June, right? That those weather, that's weather conditions, last year we had a wet June. So there was, you know, not a lot of risk. In 2021, we had the heat dome and there was a lot of risk. And so they they called it on July 1st. So by then, of course, all these, the congregations that do this, and I do think we only have one, possibly two people selling in Milwaukee, there's the one at Milwaukee Marketplace and some years, there's one at the King Road Safeway. But that one's not even every year. But, you know, by July 1, they're they're in the middle of their season. And so it was seen as much more of a hardship on them. It was it was there was sort of a better clarity for everybody in having a ban. You know, I think that was a lot of the feeling, but you should go back and watch that.
Yeah, I, you know, I, you know, I, who knew fireworks was going to be this complicated? I certainly didn't. But, you know, I my my sort of general observation is simplicity is is a virtue here. You know, you can say no fireworks at all or anything goes, those are two simple ones, you know? Somewhere in between, you know, maybe based on time, maybe based on, you know, fire hazard level. But whatever we can do to simplify this is is going to be in everyone's interest. And, you know, I think for the citizens to understand it, for enforcement to enforce those. Something that crossed my mind is that, you know, people get, you know, if we make this too complicated, you know, they they won't understand it. So again, I'm in favor of simplifying this. And maybe even, you know, the if we allow it in some forms, the fireworks stands, maybe part of the, you know, the code would be that they hand out a tear sheet that says, here's the rules in Milwaukee before you, when you buy anything. I don't know. Maybe that would help people understand what is and what isn't allowed, just a thought.
Well, I I'm hearing a lot of different opinions and not a ton of clarity for staff. Do we, I mean, I do what what more do we need? I mean, I don't know, maybe we just need to take a straw poll or maybe we, what more do people feel they need to know?
I mean, I again, I I really think we should do a little bit more research on on enforcement. Because I I think whether you ban it completely or whether you give a window, there's still going to be people that are going to do it outside of the time that you tell them, right? Outside of the parameters, right? So it's going to come down to really enforcement. And if this is something we want to.
See, I don't see it that way. I don't see it as coming down to enforcement. I remember when when we did the current ban that we have, when we did the ordinance that made, you know, it had a Milwaukee infraction to own the bought out of state ones. I remember having that that discussion with the chief then that it's really about getting, and I think we won't know, like when the cities that have banned them like Portland, you know, we won't know how effective it's been for five years. We won't know how effective ours has been for five years because it's really about getting it to be entrenched in the community. Getting it to be some peer pressure between neighbors. Getting it to be, hey, look, here's the pilot says it's no fireworks, you know? I don't think we're going to ever be able to enforce our way to compliance. I think it's about a community. I mean, certainly, the, you know, the big fines have a deterrent effect for the handful of people who get them, but it's really about the community message and, you know, the community sense, I guess. And I've heard from a lot of people over the years who, you know, from veterans. We had a woman veteran here who did a a YouTube video the first year about her experience. And lots of people who actually take their pets out of town for the July 4th weekend just because it's so, you know, such a big ordeal. So anyway.
I'm I'm sorry, Mayor, I wasn't quite sure what, I don't know if you were done and I'm I wanted to understand what you were trying to say.
I just feel like there's, I personally would like more information on how the bands are working and how the other ones are working, right? How the outside of 6:00 PM, 11:00 PM is working in Grants Pass? You know, like, I'd like to just know a little bit more info on that. Because I also know, I also understand that, you know, from what the chief had just said, you know, I just don't know if it's, how much time do we want to put our officers who are already kind of stretched to spend time on on enforcing this at the same time, you know, their resources to do that?
Well, they're already enforcing a ban.
Right, but that ban isn't an all out ban, that ban is based on right now, isn't it determined on?
What you can buy in Oregon, what's legal in Oregon, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, and we still have people who let off fireworks. Am I am I correct on that? There's still, we still, you still get complaints, so we're still, it's not going to stop it. But that's why I think I'm also looking at the Grants Pass option. It's like, okay, if if we give people a window and they get they they get the chance to get their fireworks out, is that going to minimize how many we would have had? Or if we do an all out ban, is it possible that the city can somehow put a display for people to the community to attend and see for those that do want to attend one? For families that may want to think, because the other side, I'm looking at it too, is like, how many families in Milwaukee are unable to take their families to go see another display? Right? And it's like, you know, if if, you know, using a sparkler or something could could cost somebody a thousand dollars, like, that's a little bit extreme.
Well, there's, I mean, there are lots of displays. You know, there's the big one in Portland, there's usually one at Oaks Park, which is easy enough to go sit, you know, without paying an admission and enjoy the display. There's, Lake Oswego, the last couple of years has gone to a laser.
I remember we talked about that before in the meeting.
Yeah. So I mean, there are a fair number, Happy Valley does a display. I mean, there are a fair number of displays available to folks, whether we do one in Milwaukee or not. And I do know that, you know, the Fourth of July, the one that they used to do for Milwaukee Days was always in late, well, was different times, but it was never the Fourth, it was often in late July. And it was a lot cheaper to do your firework display when it's not on the Fourth of July, when you're not competing with all the other big ones.
I think what you're talking about, like, people don't like change and it's hard to change. And fireworks have been part of this country since the colonies, right? And so now you're asking folks to totally change something that they've been doing. It's, you know, this is part of our history. And sometimes things need to change for the better, right? I really, you know, the pastor that you talked to, yeah, how do you make up eight to 11,000 dollars in fundraising? But how do we make sure that we don't have any more wildfires or, you know, folks aren't struggling with PTSD? I mean, I think nowadays more folks are more open to not having a fireworks ban. But once again, it's all about change and people struggle with change, whether it's for the the good or the bad, so.
I I agree with that and I just want to follow that up with.
And I just want to follow that up with it. Like, Mayor Beatty, you asked if the fine were lower, would we see more citations issued? I can only point out that, like, for example, careless driving, which is typically combining multiple driving infractions, is $265. And it's something where our people know, hey, we they go to crashes weekly. And they and a high percentage of those would involve some injury. So when they have to reconcile, I just saw some driving that was really bad. I have to issue someone a citation. That's a way that helps them understand that, hey, this makes sense. I feel I feel okay about this. This can be harder for a person to wrap their head around, like you said, a sparkler and $1,000 fine. And they do often involve families. They do often involve drinking. So we're also putting our people in a position where there's times when they back away from a situation because like, hey, we're literally going to have a physical altercation with folks over this this particular issue. It doesn't mean those folks are right if they're entrenched and they've been drinking and there's multiple people there, which a lot of times when there's fireworks, there are. But then one of the things that society and you folks ask us to do is look at governmental interests. How big of a deal is this? And does what what is about to happen? Does it make sense? Are we going to feel good about it when it's all done? Or are we not? And this is a complicated issue. You're right, people struggle with change, and some people do it better than others. So to whatever extent we can generate voluntary compliance as sort of a social contract and be feel good about the the citations that we are issuing or asking people to issue. I think that's that's where we want to land as often as possible. It is hard at times to ask. And I know, like, Tim issues some large fines in code enforcement for officers. Traffic citations are typically in the a couple hundred dollars range. But if they also get their car towed or if they get into traffic crimes, then it's going to go up into the probably over $1,000. But that's we do recognize that's also a really impactful amount of money. If we issue someone two citations and tow their car, that we have changed that person's probably month or several months. And we do want people to think that way to some extent. We want them to understand how much of an impact they're having with enforcement. So that's all part of the challenge of this. I don't I don't claim to have the answers, though. I think you're asking a lot of great questions.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Follow up with, you know, drinking involved in my neighborhood. And this is what I worry about when you say peer pressure, like neighbors putting peer pressure on. Punches were thrown at a neighbor who called about fireworks. And I worry that it it might go further than punches being thrown. And so having neighbors put peer pressure on, I don't think that's ever a good idea. However, I, you know, the fireworks ban is a good idea. But having everyday folks to do that to their neighbor is definitely because it was like those folks were drinking. And they've learned that the neighbor called. They went over and knocked on the door and threw punches. And that is scary because it can it can quickly escalate from punches to other things. So, yeah.
I think I'm aware of that call and our officers. I want to I think the officers went to that a couple of times. And they concluded this is going to actually result in, you know, violence unless we take what we think might be the high road tonight and we don't dive deeper into this right now. So it does get messy quick when you're dealing with groups of people and alcohol and a violation or an infraction like this.
What I was going to add about enforcement strategies was when it comes to this possible ban, the consumer firework enforcement was not citation first. It was, I mean, it's there's an education piece. So if somebody's got a sparkler in their hand and I saw them with a sparkler in their hand, I'm gonna I'm talk I'll probably have a leaflet, say, hey, did you know? And come back and if they have a sparkler in their hand again, well, then they're getting a ticket. But with with this particular thing, we're citation first for the ones that are already illegal in the state, already a code violation. That's that's where we're at with that. But on the where when I'm working it, that's where we're at. But on the 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 plan for this, as far as enforcement level goes, here's your piece of paper. Please, we have a ban. Clackamas County is not far away, whatever. I don't know. But.
I will say, just in terms of the community education piece of it. I mean, when we did the existing ordinance, the police department did a video. And some residents, actually, that I was involved with bought lawn signs and put them up around town. And then later, some neighborhood neighborhood leaders bought more of the lawn signs. So, I mean, I think there are ways to roll out. And that's really what I'm talking about when I say peer pressure is just sort of that educational. If you if your neighbor has a sign in their yard, you know they're sensitive to it. And so hopefully, that, you know, rolling out some of that kind of stuff will, you know, create more sort of understanding and sensitivity neighbor to neighbor. But I mean, I do agree, we don't want to. Yeah. Anyway, what I'm hearing is that we've we're kind of got people on the fence. No?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I I I feel comfortable proceeding with this. I don't know how others are feeling. I mean, I put together a pro and con list, just like Council President Nikotimus did. I think there are definitely concerns, you know? But that comes with all change. And for me personally, you know, and I try not to rely on anecdotes. However, I lived a block away from a very large park in another jurisdiction. And every single year, I saw children go away in ambulances because they were injured, sometimes irreparably, by the explosion of illegal fireworks. And I realize that this is it is something that creates a sense of community. I get that. I I believe that the most effective ordinances are in places that also have a really strong sense of community and make alternative offerings available. So I really like what Councillor Kozarabadi was saying about needing to create a space where, you know, people can find some way to celebrate. I'd like to continue to have that conversation. I looked on the Fire Marshal's website. There are eight permitted or approved retail sales permits that self declare Milwaukee. But it only looks like one of those, at least in my, you know, two minute search, is actually in the city limits. And I think that there is an economic influence, but the public health and environmental impact outweighs that for me. So I would feel comfortable proceeding on the 21st with ordinance.
Okay, others?
I would too.
I also did just want to let you know, councillor, that I reached out to the fire chief, and he's open to a further conversation if you'd like to have a discussion with him prior to the vote as well.
Well, we're talking about proceeding to a public hearing.
Yes. Yes, putting it on the agenda for the 21st. And there would be a public hearing. And everyone can be heard at that point. Yeah. And I guess that gives you also the chance to decide if you think there's any point to adjusting fine levels or not, you know? I mean, yeah.
Whatever you want. I mean, it's that's that's.
Okay.
You know, that's up to you guys. I just write the tickets.
Well, I'm 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 fine with advancing it to, you know.
Public hearing.
To a public hearing.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm going to do some noodling about the whole thing. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. Come back to us on the 21st then.
Thank you.
All right. And we, sorry. I think it is yours, but I need I need the script. I need the script part of it. So after the work session, council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon revised statutes 192.6602H to consult with council regarding concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So with that, the work session is adjourned. No?